My name is Ken Dunlap. I will be chairperson representing the Sioux Falls City Planning Commission. To my left is Sudhi O'Hare. She will be chairperson for Minnehaha County Commission. The two planning commissions work together on land use and zoning matters within the rural areas surrounding the city. This area is displayed on the screen. Soon will be. There you go. After information testimony is presented on an agenda item, the members will discuss the matter and then each planning commission will vote independently to arrive at a decision. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit request will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of tonight's decision is filed in the county planning office by October 29th at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the county commission and city council for a joint hearing on November 27th at 5:00 PM. When the joint agenda is completed, the city planning commission will adjourn and the meeting will continue as the county planning commission considers items beyond the joint zoning district. At this time, we would entertain consent items, but this evening we don't have anything on the consent agenda. So we will move right into...
They're both on the consent.
We will move right into approving minutes of last month's meeting.
Both items are on the consent.
Oh, wait a minute. The chairperson stands corrected.
I missed that.
Well, I take it back. The items, we have two items on the consent agenda this evening. One is the minutes from last month's meeting. And the other is a conditional use permit to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building area. Would there be anyone here in the audience that would like that item pulled off the consent agenda?
Which accessory?
Well, this would be item number two.
This is the north end of Ellis. This item is at the north end of Ellis that we're talking about right now.
Is there anyone here that would like this taken off the consent agenda? Commissioners, is there anyone on the city side that'd like this taken off the consent agenda?
Do you have a discussion on we have to ask for it to be taken from the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Then I would love so moved on.
All right. We will move item number two to will become item number one on the regular agenda. Chair would entertain motion for the approval of minutes of last month's meeting on the city side. We have a motion in a second. On favor, say the party saying yes.
Yes.
Approved on the county side.
Approved on the city side. We will now move to item number two on the regular agenda. Do we need a motion to approve the regular agenda, Jesse?
Second.
On favor, say the party saying yes.
Aye.
Justin, Dustin Powers, if you would tell us about item number two.
Good evening, Commissioner. Item two is conditional use permit 12-5-5 to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building area on property legally described as lot 1, 23, and 24 of block Harvard, block 1 Harvard Egwiers first addition of Ellis in section 9 of Wayne Township. The property owner is requesting the conditional use permit to move on 1,296 square feet, a square foot accessory building, and build an additional 1,800 square foot accessory building for a total of 3,096 square feet of accessory building area on the property. In this area, there are two properties in the immediate vicinity that exceed 1,200 square feet, one being 3,150 square feet and the other being 1,232 square feet. The property owner would like to construct these buildings west of the primary structure. The property owner is currently building a residential house right here. I believe this is lot 1 of the Egwiers addition. And the accessory buildings would be going behind that building. So one would be right behind it and the other one would be built back here. The 1,800 square foot one would be built back here in the near future. When we look at these conditional use permits, we look at five different things. The first being the effect upon the use and enjoyment of the surrounding properties. There are larger accessory buildings in this area. The proposed site and the structure meets all the applicable setbacks, therefore should have little impact on the neighboring properties. Number two, the effect upon the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding properties. The construction of the proposed building should have no impact on further construction of any of the neighboring properties or future development that may occur within this subdivision. The third thing would be utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities that are provided. Access to the proposed accessory buildings would be from the primary access to the single family home and no other infrastructure improvements would be needed. The fourth thing would be off-street parking and loading requirements. Because this is a residential property, there's not going to be a need for any of those requirements other than that are with the residential use of the property. And the fifth thing being that measures are taken to control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, vibrations, and lighting that would be potentially coming from the property. There should be no, none of these nuisances from the property as it is a residential use and the buildings would be only for residential storage. Staff has found that the conditions for approval will help ensure that the oversized accessory building will fit with the character of the surrounding properties. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit 12-5-5 with the following conditions. One, that the accessory building area for the property shall not exceed 3,096 square feet. Two, that the applicant shall obtain a floodplain development permit from the county prior to issuance of a building permit. And the applicant has already obtained that for this property. Number three, that the building shall not exceed 35 feet in height. Number four, that a building inspection is required to measure the outside dimensions of the buildings. Number five, that a building permit is required for each of the buildings. Number six, that the building shall be in accessory use to the continued use of the property as a residential lot. Number seven, that only personal residential storage shall be allowed in the building and no commercial uses or commercial storage shall be allowed at any time. Number eight, that all outdoor lighting shall be full cutoff and fully shielded, and a fully shielded design to prevent direct spillage beyond the neighboring properties, or the property boundaries, excuse me. And number nine, that the planning and zoning department reserves the right to enter and inspect the accessory buildings at any time after proper notice to the owner to ensure that the property is in compliance with the conditional use permit conditions and the Minnehaha County zoning ordinance. I do have a few photos of just the property itself. This first being from Ellis Road looking west. As you can see, there's already a hole dug there. That's where the residential property is being built, the house. And the accessory buildings would be further west of the excavator and the, or the grader and the hole there. This would be from, there is a platted road on the north side of this property and that's what you see there, the dirt there is that road being constructed there. And the hole is where the house would be. And once again, the accessory buildings would be back here behind. And this would be looking from the very west of the property, looking back to east towards the road. So the house would be in front of the buildings as if you were looking from the highway. As stated, there are larger accessory buildings in the area and that is why staff is recommending approval. So if there's any questions for me at this time, I can answer those.
From the city, would you have any questions? Dustin, for me, sir.
I do. Dustin, I wasn't at last month's meeting, but in reviewing the minutes for approval tonight, it appears that it's a very similar application to what is being requested tonight and that county recommended denial of that. Can you give some indications as to why, why these, you feel that these are not apple-to-apple comparisons?
The reason the one was denied last month was because there was no larger accessory building areas in that area. In that subdivision, he had already had the largest accessory building out there and he was requesting even a larger, he was tripling the size of his accessory building. And there's no comparable accessory buildings in that area or in that subdivision that applicant was in. In this case, there are a number, there, actually you can see it right here on the map, this building here is 3,150 square feet. The applicant is requesting less than that. So traditionally, when we review this and when we review whether it's in the joint area or out in the county area, we've always looked at comparable building, accessory building sizes in that subdivision. And if there are larger buildings in that area and the applicant is requesting that amount or lower, traditionally, we do approve those. And that is one of the major factors we look at when we look at these accessory building areas. You know, as for that other one, there were none, so there were nothing to compare it to.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from the city side?
Any questions from the county side?
Thank you, Dustin. Is the petitioner here? Would Mr. Doug Rupp be here?
No.
Thank you, sir.
Who's the planning director for? Would you mind coming up for justice, sir?
I'm not sure how it's handled at the county level. Typically, at the city planning commission, we require the petitioner to be here. If he isn't, it's typically an item we defer.
It's, we strongly encourage the applicants to attend. It's not a requirement and you certainly, we tell them when they apply that they should attend the meeting. And if they don't and questions arise, the ramifications could be that it could be continued, it could be denied. There's, the choices are all...
So he was encouraged to attend.
We encourage all of people to attend. And I believe it even indicates that on the application that they're strongly encouraged to attend the meeting, to answer any questions that might arise.
My concern is we might have some folks that might want to visit about this. The petitioner certainly has not given an opportunity to discuss with them some of the questions they might have or some of what some of the commissioners might have.
That's correct. You know, you, he has taken away the ability for the planning commission to ask him, ask the applicant questions. And so you're fully within your rights to continue it for a month if you so choose. Or you could deny it or you could approve it. But it's, it's not an automatically, it's not an automatic continuation, it's not an automatic denial or an automatic approval. It's however you see fit.
Thank you. Having said that, I would, I'd start with the city side as to how we might or might not feel about this.
Let's hear from the person that had questions, Kenny, and maybe if it's questions that could only be asked by the petitioner, then maybe take a different...
What would you think of this?
Well, I think it's unfair to anyone that came here to speak to this item, not to allow them to speak if they wanted to speak to this item too. Because you said the petitioner wasn't, isn't given the opportunity, but he was given the opportunity. He chose not to come. So I think we need to allow anyone that wants to speak to it the opportunity.
Is there someone here that would like to address item number two this evening? Why don't you come up to the podium and introduce yourself and...
I'll get your back, Maury. My name is Morris Versteig, better known as Maury. I have lived a block away from this area for it will be 35 years in January, so I am pretty familiar with the area. My main concern is the drainage. Probably 25 years ago, another gentleman, a fellow that was my next door neighbor and I were here one time at a commission meeting. And I don't know if you know it or not, but Ellis Road is a dam. And it has a 30-inch culvert in it, just to the south of this property. And, you know, in, in the city of Sioux Falls, if there's a parking lot or whatever, you've got to have a, a holding place to, to avoid flooding. Well, your pictures that you had here were evidently taken last week because I'm retired, so I can keep an eye on things as they happen. And I know for sure 10 loads of dirt came in there today. And it's been happening for the last three, four days. And so the whole area, these lots are where the house is going to be. And I'm assuming where he's going to put these other two buildings has been raised up probably about 30 inches for sure. And that's all filled in. So our holding pond is gone from, from the 160 acres to the west. That whole field drains into there and then it has to go through that 30-inch culvert, which takes, depending on the amount of moisture, two years ago, it would take three, four days for all of that water to eventually go through. And the way this is all built up now and so forth, and two-thirds of this, two-thirds of our holding pond is now built up by, I would, like I said, 30 inches for sure. And so that water has to go someplace. And so the poor guy that's two houses, gonna be two houses to the south of this, this gentleman, he's gonna be flooded. The guy, the next guy to the south, his garage is gonna be flooded. One of these large buildings that this gentleman referenced too, because that's why they're approving it, yes, that building has been there for 20 years. That could be flooded. And so that's, that's my concern. Now, it could be quite a bit alleviated if we could convince you that there needs to be more than a 30-inch culvert underneath Ellis Road. Now, but that's not the issue tonight, but it would help, it would help tremendously. And the reason 25 years ago when I was here was they were afraid of the guy on the east side of Ellis Road. Now, I have farmland myself and if that corn or soybeans or whatever it is, if it's submerged in water for four to six hours, it may still survive. If it's gonna be submerged in water for four to five days, up to a week, yeah, it's not gonna make it. So I don't know. I would, I would, I would think that the gentleman, I don't know who owns the property on the east side of Ellis Road, but I would think they would be in favor of getting the water through there so their corn or soybeans, whatever's in that field, is only submerged for maybe four, six, possibly eight hours rather than three, four days. I have a picture here of when we got four and a half inches of rain in June of 1984. My next door neighbor's got pictures on his phone of two years ago when we had a lot of water. And they're very similar. But anyhow, you're welcome to look at this picture. And, but anyhow, my boys were high school age in 1984. And the guy that lived on the end at that time, he, he had a canoe. And he always kept it on the north side of his garage. Well, about nine o'clock in the morning, this canoe comes floating by my house. And so my, my, my two boys, they jump in the canoe and they're canoeing around the neighborhood with the neighbor's canoe. And so anyhow, this is, this is my concern. And I'm not saying that it, that it's something that, that can't be affixed. It, it's just that that 30-inch culvert just cannot handle the volume of water. That's, that's the problem. And I, I'm not against this gentleman making this development, but I, I think we really do have to, in fairness to, to the people. I think when I moved there, I had a regular ranch house. And two years after I moved there, on the 19th of March, and the reason I know it was the 19th of March is because that's my mother's birthday and we were celebrating my mom's birthday. And there was quite a bit of snow on the ground, but we had three inches of rain that day. Well, anyhow, next morning about five o'clock, I hear my sump pump running. Well, anyhow, my basement started flooding. I had two sump pumps, couldn't even begin. So I ended up, I fixed my situation. I raised my house 40 inches and put a new basement under it. So I think I'm gonna be okay in 1984 when we had all this water and so forth. Yeah. There's rumors going around that I still get six inches of water in my basement, but it's been dry ever since October of 1983 when I raised my house 40 inches and put a new basement under it.
Maury, are you saying that that right now is an area that holds water, is acting as a detention area, has been a vacant piece of ground for some time?
Yeah.
Are you saying that when it rains, it's supposed to drain out to the south of those two houses? It's not draining out fast enough and it's flooding that area back there?
That's correct. That's what I'm saying.
Okay. Yes?
Have, have you ever brought this to the attention of the county before about the water?
25 years ago, my, the gentleman that lived next door to me at that time, he and I were here one time, but, and like I said, they were afraid of the gentleman. And I know there's rules, like I said, I, I got farmland and I know you can't dig a ditch and just dump the water on your neighbor. I understand that. But yet, if that water could pass through there more quickly, you know, I mean, this volume of water takes four or five days to go through a 30-inch culvert. And because it's gotta empty that area that, that we're talking about here on the screen here and so forth and, and this, and the water in, in front of our house has to run, in front of my house and my neighbor's house, has to run north to get to this culvert. And what happens, I've stood on my driveway already after we've had two, three inches of rain. I don't get that real often, but we do once in a while. And, and I've stood there and I've, I've watched and sure enough, here it comes from the north. The rain, the water comes shooting down from the north. It can't get, it has to make a right turn or left turn to go through the culvert and so forth. Instead of going through that culvert in Ellis Road, it just comes shooting right down through our ditches. Then when our ditches get filled up, then the culvert finally starts working, but it's only a 30-inch culvert.
Any other questions?
Well, I have a question, not for you, sir, but perhaps for...
Hang on just a second. Let's see if county has any questions for Maury.
I do. Whose responsibility do you feel that the culvert is? The township or who?
No, it's a county, Ellis Road is a county road, so I, so I'm thinking it's the county.
That be correct?
And I, I mean, it would, a half mile further north, that's a little larger waterway and it's, it's more of a natural waterway. But I mean, they must have, whatever, what are they, 60-inch culverts, two of them side by side that, you know what I mean, to, to let the water run through there. And we, we just, we just need some relief, I feel.
Any other questions from county? Before we ask for other comments, I think one of our commissioners would like, why don't we wait that before we bring staff up and see who else wants to talk, they might bring up some other questions? Is there anyone else here that would like to address this?
Yeah, I just want to explain a little more what Maury's talking about.
Come on up to the podium and introduce yourself.
My name's Richard Underberg and like Maury already said, I live right beside him. And if you guys look at this picture, I'll explain what he's talking about. Up here, you can see the drainage. I mean, this is that pond that just sits in here. You can see all this. You can see how it fills up behind these houses. And now if we start filling this in, this here doesn't look like it's full of water, but it is because they never cut the grass off of it. So it's all under grass. This water's gotta come down through here. This was a natural drainage. We're, we're draining off about a half a section of this field, runs right down in there. And it's gotta come down right, I lost it now, it's gotta come right through here in this culvert Maury's talking about, it's right here. And it drains out into this field. And this gentleman here is farmed through the natural drainage. I mean, you can see where his field comes down here and then that drains out to a smaller creek that goes into Skunk Creek. And when we get that type of water that we got two years ago, it's hydraulicing out of that 30-inch culvert so bad, it looks like someone's got a pump on the backside of it. And it can't go anyplace. So if we get one or two inches of water now, our only saving grace is this big holding area, this big pond area right here. And like Maury says, if I can get to this next picture here, this looks great now, but if you look here at this house, this whole lot's to this level now. It's about four foot fuller of clay that they pulled in there. And they filled this lot in it. They keep going back. This has been underwater every spring. It was underwater this spring even with the drought we had. It was underwater this spring. Two years ago, my sump pump never shut off. It shut off in December because we can't get this water out of there. It just sits in there. Now if we lose this, it's really gonna sit in there. So yes, I mean, I feel that the county needs to put a bigger culvert in here. I mean, this is what I did for a living for 24 years and it's, it's not going anyplace. It's just sitting in there. And this guy here, I mean, you can go by his place anytime, this, this house right next to him, and you can see he's pumping water because it just sits in here. We gotta get that water out of there. And it's not allowed to drain out. I mean, just to kind of give you an idea, this looks good because there's nothing in there right now. It's all down in there. But he filled that in. He put a few thousand cubic yards in there. I don't know how much, but a lot. And if he keeps going back, in order to have access to those building, he, he's gonna have to fill that whole lot in, just like Maury said. So that's our concern. It's not the concern over the building. It's the concern over that when he builds this building, we are losing the only holding pond we got for one inch or two inch rains. Because it's coming right back up those culverts. It's coming up 18-inch culverts and it just sits up there.
Okay. Any questions for the gentleman from the city side? Any questions from the county?
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to address this item? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Ron DeHertie. I farm the ground to the west around there. I basically agree with what they're saying, you know, we need more culverts in there, possibly one to the north farther to go under the Ellis Road. That's basically what we need. It's just a lot of water that just can't get away in time. That's pretty much what I would like to do.
Okay. Any questions from Ron? County? Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to address this item? I saw some people come in late. That wouldn't have been the petitioner, would it?
Yes, it would have been. So the petitioner is here to address, just quickly, and maybe it was Mr. Pearson's question, but this, Ellis is in the floodplain. That's why that water sits there. And, you know, as for natural drainage, it, you know, that's what floodplains do, they hold water and they're the last thing to drain. As for him bringing in the clay and the, and the more dirt, that is a requirement of the floodplain development permit because the house has to be built up high enough out of the floodplain. And so they had to bring in, you know, I'm not sure what the amount of dirt that they were having to bring in, but when you build, construct a building in the floodplain, you have to get a floodplain development permit in which they establish a base elevation which your house needs to be built at. And that is what, that is what that dirt, extra dirt was basically for, to make sure that the house itself was built high enough so that it was above the base flood elevation. But as for, you know, the water that's shown on the map and the pictures that they were showing, it is the floodplain. Ellis is in the 100-year floodplain and that's why the water sits in Ellis. But the petitioner is here, he can talk more about the construction and the, you know, the dirt that they brought in.
And Dusty, if I may, Mr. Chair, the, the requirement to raise it up is for the accessory building as well?
Yes, yep. He had to obtain a floodplain development permit for all buildings within... He had to obtain a floodplain development permit for all buildings within, on these properties.
Dustin, I have a question for you. It looks like these roads are being developed to the west and to the north of this property.
I would say the one to the, the north is, and that's because it's gonna provide access to the property. The one to the west has not been developed through there and I don't know if there are plans to.
And so is that developed by the homeowner?
I believe the homeowner is bringing the dirt in to that for access to his property.
The permitting process to bring this out of the floodplain, does your office administrate that?
Yes.
Do they come down here?
Yes, they would, they would need to apply, provide, they have to get an engineer to certify what the base flood elevation is for the property, so what height that they need to build at, what elevation they need to build at. And that needs to be provided to our office to obtain a floodplain development permit. And then we keep record of what that elevation is in the office.
Are they only establishing, giving it out of the floodplain? In other words, the question in my mind is by doing this, is this gonna make this dream better or worse?
Well, I wouldn't.
For the, for the neighbors downstream?
Well, if you think of a floodplain, the water just raises and lowers. It, it's not necessarily, you know, it's hard for me to say that what they're doing is gonna create an initial, a flow to the neighbor's property because basically on a floodplain, the water just comes up and goes down. And that's why they're, that's why they noticed that it takes four and a half days or whatever for the water to go down. And that's, that's how floodplain, you know, that's how the water in the floodplain works.
Well, it causes it to be deeper downstream than maybe without.
I, I can't speak to.
And I don't know, I'm just.
Yep, I can't.
I think that's their concern a little bit?
Yep. I guess.
So that's not looked at at the process. What they're looking at is, hey, are you just lifting it up out of the floodplain?
Yes.
Okay. Any other question for Dustin? Did someone say the petitioner was here to be willing to step up? Can you introduce yourself?
I'm Doug Rubin and I'm the one that put the request in for the conditional use permit for, for the exercise building.
Doug, have you been here for all the conversation?
I missed the first part of it. The doors are all locked, we couldn't get in. We had to bang on the doors, there was a custodian that let us in. The doors in the courthouse were all locked. They must've shut them down at seven o'clock and we couldn't get in, but the custodian let us in.
I think I can summarize, we've had a number of neighbors come in concerned about.
The floodplain issue and the drainage.
About the floodplain, the water on that side of the T Ellis Road and is this, I think I can state this, gonna make it better or make it worse? The general feeling is, is that they think it might make it worse. I, not being an engineer, I, I don't know.
I don't think it'll have any effect at all. The water that's there is gonna be there whether we're there or not. The flow going out of that area, if a 30-inch pipe won't handle it, then they should talk to the county about increasing the size of the outlet pipe. We put a pipe in front of our lot that we're developing, that we're putting the house on, we put in a pipe the same size as the pipe next to us. We got a permit from Minnehaha County Highway to handle that. And I don't think it, it'll, it'll make any difference at all. The water's gonna be there whether we're there or not. We're just requesting to have a one size bigger building than, than what they're allowed. We're allowed 12, I think they're allowed 1,200 feet and we wanted to put in 3,100 feet.
Are you saying you've put a pipe under the highway now to drink some additional?
Just a, just a driveway going into, into those lots.
So a pipe underneath the driveway to get it down to the existing culvert?
Yep. So where, where we come off the road, we've got a driveway coming in right next to the neighbor there and it's the same size pipe and the, and the water will flow through there, but it won't make any difference as far as the 30-inch pipe going out. We're not gonna affect the water flow one way or the other.
Any other questions from the city side for Doug?
My earlier question was answered already.
Okay, good.
Dustin, your side?
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to address item number two? Seeing none, I would look for commission recommendation and I'll start with the, the city side.
I'll make a motion to approve for discussion purposes.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion of second. If all in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes. Okay. Do we just make the same motion or we vote on your motion?
Make your own motion, make their own.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the county side?
I'll move.
For approval?
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion. All second. A second?
I think it'd be fair.
All in favor, certified by, or are we gonna discuss or, okay, go ahead.
I think it'd be fair to say, let's, I don't think we have to discuss it side by side. I think we can all discuss it as a group, can't we? Would anyone have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I guess my feeling is that the people who stated their case very clearly about the water concerns, I think their next step, if they need to do one, is to petition the county for just what they're asking for. A larger, a larger outlet might, you know, might satisfy some of their concerns. It's sort of a side issue to what we're really trying to discuss here today. So I'm in favor of the motion and I'm gonna encourage the concerned citizens to, you know, take their next step.
And Mr. Chair, it appears the, the city and the county have reviewed the.